Mr. Chairman and others that are in the meeting, thank you for your patience. The video is on Facebook Live. It is now streaming and you are free to start the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Sandaya, have we complied with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next is roll call. Committee members, please unmute yourselves in reply, present or here. Sandaya, will you please do the roll call?
Brad.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Roger.
Here. Did you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Jim.
Here.
Steven.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the approval of agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
For members, if you have any changes to the agenda, please state them when called upon by Sandaya. Otherwise, please unmute yourself to vote yes or no to approve the agenda. Then mute yourself now. Sandaya, and please roll call.
Brad.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of.
Did we just lose the chairman?
I believe.
He's still showing.
Maybe, there he is.
Just working action.
Okay.
Brad, can you hear us okay?
I'm trying to code it at the same time.
Sandaya, are you there?
Yes, can you hear us okay?
Now I can.
Okay.
Did you hear what I?
We can start back with the approval of minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before we move for approval, I'd like to move for some corrections to the minutes.
Okay.
On the page one, present from the committee, at least my copy, shows that Rob Bender was present, when that should show that Stephen Arnold was present.
I will make that correction, Mr. Chairman.
And on page two, this is just a spelling on item, the fourth item down, Hilton Head Audubon Society, the correct spelling of Audubon, in the table. And those are all the corrections I had to the minutes.
Okay, Drew, you want to make a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Fluker's edits.
Second.
Sandaya, you want to do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Brad.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes, ma'am.
Roger.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next portion is citizen comments. Sandaya, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, public comments concerning today's agenda items have been submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The public comment period closed yesterday at noon. All comments were provided to the committee for review and made a part of today's official record. There were four comments for a total of 12 minutes of public comment. Currently, we have one person that has signed up for public comment in today's meeting.
Okay, well, each caller will be unmuted by staff and given three minutes to address the committee. At the three-minute mark, I will alert the caller. Please note that after the public comment, you will be disconnected from the call for the committee to continue the meeting. First up would be Skip Hoagland.
Can you? Yes, I have two minutes and 55 seconds, 50 seconds. Tell me when I can begin.
You're good right now.
Okay, afternoon. So again, I want to do something different and offer a million-dollar check to anybody that can prove me wrong. We all know the Chamber is a local business league with 1,500 private members. Many businesses choose not to join or support the way it is currently illegally operated as secret sauce. A private nonprofit chamber should not be a DMO. This should be a hired local newspaper, ad agency, media company, or perhaps a separated CVB, but not best choice. Regardless, this job under gold standards is purely to take ATAX funds and market the entire community. That's it, that's simple. This is not supposed to be a pay-to-play favoritism initiative to profit the pockets of a chamber, certainly not refuse all the ATAX receipts and invoices as secret sauce for all of our tax money. A private Chamberhead employee, Bill Miles, should not receive $400,000 salary pay package to cut ribbons and, in fact, worse, generated by taxpayers' money from the illegal advertising sales and tax evasion on the tax-funded website and $100,000 app that was a failure and a flop. We, that should have cost $20,000. We all know the Chamber is not responsible for tourism. This is done by technology, local search, social media, and independent marketing efforts of many local businesses and 45,000 local Facebook accounts of local residents, second homeowners. In fact, 70% are repeat visitors, according to the corrupted US CVB study that was produced. The island packet and its marketing ability and the other media can do COVID-19 and hurricane marketing much better and much more effectively. The Chamber needs to get back to just being a private nonprofit business league that many businesses, again, choose not to join, and an ATAX committee needs to stop recommending these millions that are a failed old DMO business model and worse, for illegal chamber use, profit, and abuse of taxpayers' money. I feel I know a lot about this, but I can't help fix this, unfortunately, and I can't change the minds of those corrupted and people like you, Brad, who are appointed by Steve Riley that's breaking the law with partners Bill Miles and Kerry Corbett of Seapines, not to mention you are in huge conflict with others on this committee who are Chamber members. Bottom line, this ATAX committee and the Hilton Head Council has failed the taxpayers. You failed yourself in only two reasons. You're either incompetent, you're just not paying attention, or you're allowing yourselves to be used as a, for corruption. Where's the contract and where are the receipts and the invoice? So who wants my million-dollar check today? Prove me wrong. This is not going to stop until we get this thing fixed. Thank you very much, and y'all stay safe and have a nice day, and thank you for my three minutes. Hello?
Yes, thank you, Skip, for staying within the timeframe today, and thank you for your comment. Next is new business. Next is new business. This is the 2021 marketing plan for the Hilton Head Chamber CVB. Sandaya, Drew and I will need to recuse ourselves from this portion of the discussion, and Jim will take over the presentation, discussion, and vote.
There you go. Thank you. Ms. Pernice, are you ready to make your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Arianna Pernice, and I am the Vice President of the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, and I oversee the Visitor and Convention Bureau. And if you will, I'm going to share my screen with you and walk you through what is our presentation for the 2020-2021 DMO marketing plan. As we all know, that fiscal year begins July 1, and this is our presentation on the use of those dollars as we enter into the new fiscal year. Is everyone able to see my screen? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. So if you will, I'm gonna, I'm going to begin. We always like to, before we look forward, we'd like to look back and just see where we landed in terms of 2019, and just a quick review for everyone to have a base start. So if you look at our year in review as in terms of the HiltonHeadIsland.org website and the destination as a whole, we had 2.1 million website visitors. We had a social engagement of over 156,000 sessions across all channels. We had an extraordinary public relations year with over 3,000, close to 4,000 stories and mentions, and our occupancy and ADR and RevPAR showed signs of progress in hotels, home, and villa combined. But the new introduction here to the bottom of this slide is what our DARA technology that we introduced earlier in the year has brought forth in terms of what revenue was generated by HiltonHeadIsland.org. So here, we are excited to share with you, over 58 million was brought forward to the economy as in terms of tourism as it serves Hilton Head Island. All right, it's not letting me progress. Here we go, thank you. So again, looking back at the economic impact of Hilton Head Island tourism to Southern Beaufort County, it's 1.5 billion. What does that generate in terms of jobs? Over 16,000, close to 17,000 jobs generated from Hilton Head Island tourism. So that, for a sake of a visual, if you, for every dollar that is put into marketing, the destination, we have a return of $15.90 regarding spending. In total, there were 2.68 million visitors to Hilton Head Island. Again, that was 2.1 million visitors to the website. We had over 728,000 conversions or handshakes out to the partners, and 28 million in public relations ad equivalency. So that's all mentions of the destination as a whole, combined with our efforts. Visually, what did that turn, return for us in terms of recognitions and accolades? As we've spoken to throughout our conversations, that's recognition on several lists in terms of World's Best, Number One Island, Best Beach Town. We also are a bicycle-friendly community, Adrian Award winner, convention south in terms regards to meetings and groups. So we are recognized nationally, internationally, across many different industry sectors in regards to tourism and the destination as a whole. In addition to the numbers and accolades that we have just spoken to, there has been a lot of work to the platforms in which we use and are able to then bring forth detailed information analytics forward to you and to other stakeholders. So we had mentioned the DARA technology. We made that announcement earlier this year, and that integration provides that holistic insight to today's traveler, traveler, excuse me, and is really able to articulate the value of the website, which is an exciting new step in our efforts to partner with the community as a whole in talking in regards to tourism, excuse me. We've seen strong optimization efforts across both HiltonHeadIsland.org and HiltonHeadBlufftonChamber.org, again, just ensuring that both channels are talking to each other, and we're getting the best opportunities for our members and our partners. We work very closely with both of the airports that serve this destination in terms of expansion of air service. And then we've embarked, and many of you participated, on our 10-year destination management plan. And again, that's, that's this opportunity that we're talking through today in further depth about that roadmap of a shared vision for the community, and as we talk and hold hands on that responsible sustainable tourism growth conversation. Let's dive a little deeper into a shared vision for the future of tourism. We just mentioned the 10-year destination management plan, and that's in place to help ensure a shared value and vision for the destination and the promotion. It's really talking about destination stewardship and ensuring that together we're working collaboratively to ensure development and sustainable growth. We are always ensuring the advocacy and common interests of our partners, and we're working to stimulate a regional economy. At the end, we're always looking for quality of life, quality of place, and so those are always top of mind and at our foundation and core when we're working to promote tourism for the destination. But if we can, let's all start to talk about how we all found Hilton Head Island, and I think that's the conversation that helps us shake hands with so many when we meet them, whether it be in a store, or on the beach, or on a pathway. I believe so many of us found Hilton Head Island through tourism ourselves. And so when we came here for a destination, excuse me, experience, and then visiting Hilton Head Island, we take that experience and we say that we do believe it starts with a visit. And I think this is a very powerful slide, and if you'll allow me a few minutes just to read it. But it's what we like to see as the destination management cycle. And if you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where businesses need to be. If you build a place where businesses need to be, you'll build a place where people have to visit. If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live, and that cycle continues. We are constantly stewards of not only, you know, visitation and tourism, but we are stewards of ensuring this destination for quality of life and quality of place for all. And so we think community first, and we have that lens on constantly, every single day in our efforts. So how will we set forth ensuring those efforts are in place? Well, we have initiatives and actions such as these three that are in front of you. We look closely at destination stewardship, community alignment, and digital conversion. And as we dive a little deeper into each one, I think it'll showcase where we are in this process. So as we look through destination stewardship, we're curating an immersive destination experience on a daily basis for those that want to find Hilton Head Island and take a deeper dive into all that we have to offer. But we also are responsible in helping manage sustainable visitor growth and promoting equitable economic development, elevating the quality of life and quality of place for all. It's a fine balance that you have to manage every single day, and we do that in partnership with our community leaders and community as a whole. We have to ensure community alignment. We need to ensure that we're aligned in all of our efforts going forward, accelerating important destination development, protecting the public funding, and enhancing hospitality culture. And digital conversion, and I think that is never more important than as we enter out of COVID-19, but increasing our digital assets, ensuring technology platforms are in place to meet current and future needs and demands. What does that mean? As we, as you have had the time to go through the plan, and we have often spoken about the importance of these digital platforms and that how there are multiple ways to dissect any, not only destination, but product or brand as a whole, and you really have to be front and center in all of those platforms to ensure that your brand has the proper share of voice. And so ensuring that you have video and you have relevant photography in many different capacities is important as we move forward in this, in this process. Visually, I wanted to showcase what industry and community partnership looks like. So if you look up top where you see industry disruptors, industry clients, community leaders, and destination leaders, this is all of the community, the community as a whole, working alongside or with the DMO. And the DMO, inside of it, has curators, adopters, catalysts, activists, and collaborators. The output is global marketing tourism efforts, community awareness, support, and partnership. This is an evergreen, ever-moving effort in that there's synergy working back every single day, ebbing and flowing together to make sure that we have Hilton Head Island on top of mind. Again, I'm going to reiterate, quality of place, quality of life. When you look at our strengths as a destination and what that articulates in community alignment, I'm not going to go through every single one, but I've tried, I've tried to outline here, strengths of the brand, strengths of the destination in our own unique way. Obviously, conventions and meeting facilities aren't traditional, but we have them here, and we offer them to a unique, we have a unique offering to put forward. Events, again, our events are very unique and different, and I think those that are, that are very appealing to many in the community and into the rest of the world who are accessing Hilton Head Island. Our brand is top of mind. We've had over 60 years of opportunity to build on this brand and reiterate its strength. We have a strong repeat rate, as we've heard. There's 70% repeat rate from a outside research platform and partner, and, you know, with that 70%, brings back a piece of the island every single year that lives in someone else's DNA. They come here, they visit, they feel a part of Hilton Head Island, they're contributing to the community, and they're excited to come back. But we would be remiss if we didn't talk about the global pandemic in front of us, so COVID-19, and where has that taken us? All the things that we've just talked through, our 10-year brand management plan that's going to be in place, all of our efforts and trims of working with our community, working alongside, ensuring quality of life and quality of place, those are still at the forefront. And as we work through the global pandemic, we will continue to chart forward on those efforts, but we need to talk and recognize, talk about and recognize the impact of COVID-19. So if you will allow me a couple minutes to do that. From a national perspective, we're looking at this from the travel industry and the impact COVID-19 has had on the travel industry as a whole. There's staggering statistics in front of you, nothing more glaring than the nine times impact of 9/11, as well as the unemployment rate in staggering low. The loss alone that the travel industry has taken due to COVID-19 has pushed the U.S. potentially into a recession, but it has definitely put the travel industry into a recession, and that's a challenge right there as we try to work forward in our efforts to ensure our number one economy, which is travel and tourism. Locally, what has that translated into? Thousands of jobs lost throughout Beaufort County. When we were able to submit applications to the Department of Employment and Workforce, we saw a peak of over 3,000 applications at the highest, and that is tracked by week. You don't do a cumulative there. 2.8 billion, excuse me, in SBA applications within South Carolina had been approved, and there were over 1,700 keys or units, which equated to eight properties across the destination that were closed due to COVID-19. There was a great community need, which equated to over 15,000 meals provided in partnership with Help for Hope in the Chamber that we're very proud to have partnered with, and that continues to grow. In efforts to help support the efforts of reopening and recovery, the Chamber in partnership with the town and the community as a whole began the Path Forward Readiness Plan, and that, that project and that program really is a comprehensive startup strategy for Southern Beaufort County. It measures and it puts in necessary protective measures to safeguard the health and community of workforce and visitors. We want to ensure that there's confidence in this community when we reopen, and that we do this together. The tools that were created are for the entire business community, but they're also for our community as a, as a whole to feel safe as we look to reopen and welcome daily routine, but also visitors back to the destination. So a visual on what the Path Forward Readiness Plan was and how it began, in late April, we assembled task force groups, and those were a mix of business leaders, council members, community stakeholders, and those task force derived or developed checklist plans that were for each nine industry groups that we defined. And within those community, excuse me, within those task force groups and those nine work groups, they were able to, able to put forth those plans, and when the plans were, went through or submitted and signed as a pledge, they would, the business or individual owner would receive a pledge or a seal. The seal is then a visual that a, either a community member or a visitor could recognize and feel that there was an extra step or layer taken to put safety first. So to review and discuss the community partnership opportunities, we, we had really top of mind in putting this program forth was to protect our community, business and visitors, allow for safe reopening of businesses, and establish clear expectations for employees and customers. Here's just a quick snapshot of what the organizational chart looked like in terms of the nine task force groups. The steering committee, that was made up of healthcare professionals, as well as led by Ray Warko, who's a community member and a CPA. He helped us lead the charge on small business, retail, faith organizations, restaurants, art and culture, hotel, home and villa, early childhood, and recreation and attractions. Visually and from a access point of view, we had a dedicated landing page, which is still there, where it is thepathforward.org. You would take the sample, this is an example of a sample checklist, you would go through that checklist, take the pledge, and you would receive the pledge seals, and those, again, are digitally, digitally, excuse me, digitally available, or you could also have them for your window claim or for your storefront. In addition to the details that you see on this page, we also were heavy on the communications and outreach, both locally as well as from the visitor perspective. We wanted everyone to understand that this, this plan was in place and that the community was engaged, and they were taking steps to ensure safety first. So there are two videos that I wanted to share with you that showcases what that communication looks like. So this was our local video that is out in market today. And as we move forward, this is the one that was with our visitors, and there's been a series on both fronts that will continue with these videos that continue to communicate where we are in the process. This is the visitor-facing video. So that's where we are in terms of the readiness plan, the Path Forward Readiness Plan, which is, again, in place and available to all of our community businesses, our community as a whole. And we also want the, you know, visitors as well as the community to understand that we are putting the community first and that safety is a top priority for us, and that we want to ensure that everyone is confident and comfortable regarding COVID-19 as we take these steps together to reopen. That being said, we do still want to put forth the 2020-21 Hilton Head Island Destination Marketing Plan, again, with that fiscal year starting July 1. As you know, we have moved through the budgeting process and have given our best projections based on where we believe the funding will be Q1. our best projections based on where we believe the funding will be Q1, Q2, Q3, and going forward. So as I walk you through this plan, as we look forward into our new fiscal year, understand that the strategies and tactics that are in place are flexible and that they can bend and fluctuate based on the current situation and available funds. With our marketing efforts, we like to first start with the demographic and personas. And when we look at that, we look to our research and we look to our collaborations with USCBL or ITI, as well as Clemson University and Adara Analytics. Our target leisure traveler is an affluent traveler. 59.1% of undergraduate degree or higher. They take two to seven trips per year, and their average length of stay is seven nights. We skew heavily female at 67%. And when you look at the age distribution, we can see that 30.6% are 45 to 54 years old, excuse me. And the household income distribution is 43.8% at $100,000 to $149,000, and 10.5 to $150,000 to $199,000, and so on and so forth. Our top flight origin markets, based on Adara Analytics, are Boston, Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, Chicago, Philadelphia, Dallas, Fort Worth, Washington DC, in both airports, Pittsburgh, and Hartford, Connecticut. When you look at our trip planning window, which is exciting information to have, in terms of booking a hotel or taking a flight, the windows from look to book and book to, excuse me, from flight or into the destination. So for a hotel, there's 19 days from look to book, and then from book to the vacation is 48 days. And then when they're looking for flights, they're looking for about 13 days before they book. And then they're taking from the time they book their flight to their take their flight is 58 days. And when we dive a little deeper than just from the information on the first slide, who are we going after? Who are we speaking to? And how do we approach each one of these? And there's a deeper dive inside the marketing plan itself for each one of these personas. But from a high-level perspective, we're talking to families, snowbirds, sports enthusiasts, weekenders, culinary explorers, those who enjoy arts, history, and culture, and international travelers. When you look at key areas of interest, we're seeking to speak to beach, natural beauty and excursions, golf and tennis, culinary, biking, and of course, arts, history, and culture. And the way that we take key areas of interest and we layer in the persona, we have the opportunity, due to research and the partnerships that we have on the research side, to understand which each one of those personas really gravitate towards. So we can become laser-focused in terms of the messaging that we're presenting to those groups or those key personas. So we can understand, as an example, that this family might truly enjoy the beach, but also might love some excursion, or maybe they're foodies and we can talk to them at a little deeper level about all the culinary efforts that we have within the destination, so on and so forth. We're able to get into the details of what piques their interest, not only from their day-to-day life, but also their interest as they look to travel. Consumers are leaving what you would call a bit of a breadcrumb behind every time they search a site or they go and they explore different areas of different brands. And we're able to capture that information and give appropriate messaging back to them to interest them in our destination, Hilton Head Island. But alongside the personas and the key areas of interest need to be strategies and tactics. We've identified those of being five strategies that have many tactics underneath them. We've taken essentially the marketing plan that you've traditionally seen from us, and we've pulled forward those five key strategies and taken the tactics out from each section and layered them under. For the purpose of this meeting, I did not layer each tactic underneath, but I thought we could talk through the five that we have in front of us in terms of overarching strategy. So when you look at strength in brand awareness and marketing, again, this is us talking about amplifying our third-party media partnerships to further endorse and amplify our brand and our voice overall to a different audience and ensure that we're reaching as far into different areas of interest as we possibly can. We want to expand and broaden organic keyword rankings. We want to leverage a strategic mix of targeted methods to identify and reach the most qualified users. We always want to deliver clear and consistent and relevant messaging and create content and measurements when we're talking about social media because it is a growing platform. Create and distribute personalized, informative, and strategic email content. And this is delivered through a drip campaign, and that is an exciting, exciting process as you start to understand where your visitor is in terms of engaging with you on a brand and how you need to adjust and tweak your message to fit where they are in that process. On number two, expanded meetings and groups. This is such an important part of our business and with COVID-19 and the recovery efforts, even more important reason that we need to really focus on ensuring meetings and groups are able to rebound and find place here on Hilton Head Island. And so there's several tactics underneath, item number two, but excited to grow and explore further what meetings and groups can bring to this island. As we look to number three on energized destination development and management, this is that part of that master plan that we talked about earlier. And we need to ensure that that strategic framework is in place and ensure that we identify the product development opportunities within the destination and work together to ensure that those are brought forward. And there's a plan around getting them ready for everyone to enjoy. Number four, sustainable and innovative organization. So we want to ensure that this brand, this organization are always innovative and thinking ahead, thinking of what next and what else could we be doing. And we need to, as we talked about earlier, that digital focus. And so everything has that point of view and we're considering it. Is it strategic? Is it innovative? And can it help us sustain the destination going forward? And number five is improved alignment and community engagement. This is so much a part of who we are as a community, and we want to ensure that we're aligned as we move forward in this effort. And so there will be, as there has been, continued efforts to outreach and engage our community stakeholders, community as a whole, and ensure alignment as we move forward together in this process. So that speaks to the presentation as a whole, but we are ready for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Prinise. At this time, I will conduct a roll call for discussion of the chamber presentation. At the time you are called on, please unmute yourself. When you're done, please mute yourself back. Roger Freeman? Any discussion, Roger?
No.
Okay. Stephen Arnold?
Just thank you for your time and the efforts you've had to put into readjusting and reallocating everything. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Julie Smith?
Hi, good afternoon. First, thank you for the presentation. Two phrases that you mentioned struck me. The first was quality of life and quality of place, and the second was destination stewardship, especially given what we are all experiencing with COVID-19 and reopening. There's a bit of a split in the feel of the community around what we're doing and how we're doing it, whether it's too soon, whether tourists are being respectful, and how we manage maintaining the success that we've had with tourism, as well as encouraging them to come, as well as maintaining the safety of our community. It wasn't clear through the presentation and the discussion about COVID-19 and reopening if that's going to result in adjustments to the marketing plan. And I do understand that the marketing plan begins fiscal year July 1. So we are looking even as far as the beginning of the summer next year. But maybe you can speak a little bit more about how the Chamber is planning to reconcile those two things, safety of our residents and our tourists when they come, and any adjustments to the marketing plan that you've made or are making to help do that.
Absolutely. And a great question. Thank you. We are very excited to have been able to put forth the Path Forward Readiness Plan. So Julie, I think when we look at what there has been put in place in terms of plans and protocol and preparation, we start there. We've worked alongside our state government, as well as our state tourism agency, to understand where as a whole, the state as a whole, we are in terms of COVID-19 recovery. We've also worked very closely locally, locally with our businesses, locally with our community members, and locally with our town and town council and mayor to understand not all those different layers of where we are in recovery. And so with the very onset of this pandemic, we took strategic measures to adjust our marketing, and we have continued to do that throughout the process in terms of tourism. Those were the videos there. So those were a series of videos, but that was the most recent that I shared. And we had put in place at the very beginning that, you know, we are all kind of holding right now on taking visitors, and that was the very beginning. And then now we're working towards kind of what does that reopening look like? And so even though we're preparing for the July 1 timeframe, that is just in point what it is, a timeframe, and that we are working every single day in partnership with our community, with our town and our other stakeholders to understand when the timing is right. And we continually pull and understand the numbers and the needs from our community as well. So I think we should, we should look to those details of what has been put in place and then the communication that is there that we will, we will continue to do that as we look to reopen, if you will, or bring back tourism as it applies to the plan. As I mentioned in the beginning, I think this is a plan that is very malleable and can be flexed, turned up, turned down, adjusted to meet the new needs of post-pandemic. And as we look to all the different tactics that support the strategies, the strategies overall support a destination management plan that puts forth destination stewardship. And that does take in the responsibility of understanding our new future of tourism. And so again, I think the plan really is supportive of that and has channels in which can be flexed to accommodate the new needs.
I appreciate that. Thank you. With one follow-up question, a little bit more specific to the budget. With so many organizations canceling or postponing events that they had scheduled that were in partnership with the Chamber for marketing for those things, do you see adjustments to the budget based on those cancellations or postponements?
And I have Ray Deal here, who can speak to that opportunity. They can see him?
Yeah, for the record, Ray Deal, Controller of the Chamber. Yes, some of the events that we would normally market for, obviously, those dollars will be reallocated to things like digital marketing and things like that. For the most part, for the rest of this fiscal year, we've turned down the spigot of the marketing spigot, and we are going to hopefully roll over some of those funds to market, you know, in a greater manner after the start of the fiscal year and hopefully after COVID subsides.
Thank you both. No further questions for me.
All right. Richard Thomas, do you have any questions?
I have one question. It's really a little bit of curiosity based on the data, some of the data that was presented. But I'd like to thank Arianna again for a very thorough and focused presentation and kudos to the work that you're doing to be flexible in a very difficult to predict kind of a situation. But my question really relates to the Adara data that you're collecting. And does Adara provide demographic breakdowns by season or month? I mean, that was obviously a composite for the year, but are those breakdowns available shoulder season, high season, winter, et cetera?
Yes, sir. So we can look at the data in many different slices, if you will, of time. And so whether that be a month, you can look at it in a series of months, if you will. So yes, we have the capability to look at it in different timeframes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Arianna, I just have a couple of questions in there. Some of them are based on the budget differences from the original budget that we were submitted, submitted to us about a month ago than the one we received this week. And the other one is this question. We had 2.7 million visitors, tourists during, I guess, the last measured timeframe. What would be considered, I guess, what can we look forward to in the next 12 months during the fiscal year? Are we looking, what kind of numbers if we know? Or are we shooting for?
I'm going to answer the first part of the question and let Arianna talk about the number of visitors, the second part of the question. So there was a significant difference in the budget that we submitted originally to the one that you have in front of you now. This is actually the third iteration that we put together in the last three months for obvious reasons. You know, in the 14 years I've been at the Chamber, this has definitely been the most difficult budgeting. We put together the original budget in February that would normally, you know, go with the marketing plans in March, and that had, the town of Hilton Head, accommodation taxes at about 2.1, 2.2 million. Then COVID hit, and we basically did a second iteration, looking at 15%, 40%, 60%, and 75% over the next four quarters, which dropped the ATAX down from 2.1-ish million to about $750,000. Obviously, you know, at that point, we weren't sure. We lost all of April. We thought we were going to lose May and possibly part of June. What has happened in the last couple of weeks, of course, is that we've had a bounce back. So we did a third iteration of the budget. And so the ATAX numbers that you're looking at right now are $1.1 million, which is roughly, if you look at year over year, is going to be about half. We have some risks with this budget, just so everybody knows. One is, you know, are we going to have a second wave of COVID? If we don't, I think we're going to do far better than the 1.1 million that I projected. But there are a couple other things that are going to happen. We're going to lose a lot of our group business for the foreseeable future. Our leisure traffic is going to be strong, again, assuming no second wave of COVID. But, you know, this is a moving target. And again, right now, I'm looking at about half of the ATAX revenues for the next fiscal year versus what we're going to see in fiscal '20.
Great. And thank you, Ray. And what we'll look to do in terms, you know, in terms of asking about visitors and visitors to the island, you know, I look to what there is on a daily basis to fill. So if we look at the number of hotel rooms, the number of home and villas that we have in place, there's 9,000 units or keys, if you will. So that's just from a level set. There's approximately 6,000 home and villas on the market every single day, and there are approximately 3,000 hotels, hotel keys available. And so when we look at what is available, that's the number that is out there and that we are reporting against. When we look back to the destination management plan, when we look at other statistics within a way we measure occupancy, ADR, RevPAR, we're always looking to work with our partners to understand how we can build a quality to understand how we can build a quality experience, but also ensure the persona and that we're, and key demographics that we're going after. And so when you look, that's a daily conversation, a regular conversation with our partners to ensure that the best offerings are in place in terms of price and experience, and we work constantly to ensure that they're targeting those, those visitors.
Let me ask you a question again, and either one of you can answer this. It's a budget issue item. Based on the current status of travel and such, are we writing off international guests for this year? Because I've looked at the changes in the budget. Is that because of the current travel bans or is that adjustable?
It's, it could, yeah, so it's, you're correct that in place right now with the travel bans, we thought it responsible to move those funds into other areas that spoke more to our domestic travelers. If for, if there were drastic changes within those travel bans, then we could flex some of the funding back into those international lines. But at this time, we felt they were more appropriately used in our domestic efforts.
And I guess this is a question that I'll just leave to you for now. Again, with the changes in budgets and such, and I noticed that that also reflects a great change in, in your, in your, on your expenditures for personnel. Does that mean that the Chamber professional staff is being cut or their hours being cut? How are you dealing with that?
Yes, that is, that is correct. We have reduced about 250,000 out of our, out of our budget with four, yeah, four full-time layoffs and two furloughs of part-time people. You know, at that, at this point, that's what we foresee. We're not sure if more are going to be necessary, but those are factored into the plan as of now.
And I don't know that this is, well, let me just ask you a question. I see on the most recent budget item or budget that was supplied to us, the line item for the supplemental crisis fund grant from the city. I also saw that was removed from the city council meeting last week. What is the status of that or is that even pertinent to this discussion?
Yeah, let me, let me start off with that. For this particular discussion, none of the supplemental or the crisis grant funds, that's not really what, what this meeting is for.
Right.
We are still considering whether we're going to put forth the crisis funds grant request or not.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Does anybody that would, anybody have a follow-up from their previous ones? If you do, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. If not, I'm going to, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the presented, the presented Bluffton, Hilton Head Island Chamber of Commerce marketing plan and budget? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Make a motion?
All right, any second?
I second.
Sunday, will you please call for the roll?
Roger Friedman?
Approve.
Steven?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Richard?
Approve.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up is under new business is the consideration of policy recommendations to town council for ATAX grants affected by the COVID-19 virus. To give us some background information, John Troyerson?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we are all dealing with, as COVID-19 has affected everyone's plans this year, and many of your grantee agencies have had their plans changed as well. And so the grants have been awarded on the basis of 2020, although many of the activities in 2020 were not able to be presented. And so what town council would like is a recommendation on how to best proceed that there are events that didn't happen and how might be the best way to proceed with the unspent money and considering that with a New Year's, New Year's proposal, there'll be another set of proposals to be made. A couple of thoughts that we had just to help start the discussion would be that if funds were spent in good faith, on approved purposes, that we should go ahead and reimburse those even if an event didn't happen. If an event was canceled but funds not spent, we would suggest that they don't automatically carry forward. But I think the committee should consider a strong consideration for unspent money to be used into the new year so that they can send a signal to the agencies that if they don't spend money, they won't be penalized and special consideration will be afforded them in their next request. And there's also an expectation, Ray talked about a little bit, is that our expectation is that the ATAX revenues are going to be down. And so something that might help the process for next year is these lapsed grants, funds that are not spent this year can help offset those revenue shortfalls for the new year. And so anyway, I, I've put all of this information to the committee representing town council, kind of seeking some advice and guidance on how does the committee want to proceed or how would the committee recommend to proceed? And so I'm here for any questions, but really we just want some suggestions from the committee.
Okay, well, thank you, John. It's time I'd like to open up the discussion to the committee. I'll conduct this by roll call. First up is Drew Brown.
Thank you, Brad, Mr. Chairman. John, I'll actually have just a couple of quick questions clarifying for you. So if you want to unmute yourself. So one, you know, I think that we would have to handle this on a case-by-case basis simply just because we're in a situation where, with where the event schedule is with everyone, some were in the planning process, some had already spent, some had to cancel. So, you know, I think as a committee, that's definitely one thing that we would want to, in my opinion, take back to town councils. It's going to really have to be a case-by-case situation. But my question to you is there was some, some question, we want to make sure that with the granting of the funds, there's two years to spend and there's, we want to make sure there's no, in your opinion from the town's level, there's no penalty or folks aren't in default if we would do something where that funding would roll over, correct?
Correct. We looked back to the award letters and the award letters were specific for activities in 2020, but they could be reimbursed into 2021. So that second year is available. And so that's just something the committee could consider is opening up that window.
Okay. And then, you know, I think again, I'm not opposed, in my opinion as well, to, you know, ATAX money is going to be off. You know, you know, again, you look at the first quarter and the first part of the second quarter and almost zero, zero dollars when you look at March, April, you know, produced in terms of where we were. So I'm not, in my opinion, I'm not opposed to let the spending happen as long as it's not going to be a situation where we almost have to have some type of a commitment from those organizations. And that's the reason why it's going to be a case-by-case situation as well, because we don't know if all of these organizations, you know, unfortunately are going to be able to survive. So, you know, and if that's the case, then they're not going to survive, then I think the funds would need to be returned. You know, just, just if it's not a reimbursement situation, if it's unspent, is my point.
Yeah, they're all on reimbursement. So what we require of them is documentation of the spending and then we reimburse.
Okay, that would be fully reimbursable situation. So that was, that was my other question. So those are really kind of my only thoughts. I think it's, again, it's going to be very case-by-case, and then we're going to have to, you know, the guideline that needs to be set up is, you know, at what point the activity is going to happen and, you know, what, what the timeline is, because you're going to get into the award cycle again. You know, and we're just going to have to have something set in stone by then so that we know when we, the money comes down from the state level, what we've got to spend and who still has monies to be spent. And I do think that's something that we'll need to consider as a committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Roger Friedman?
I, I think I'm on the same page. Our amount of money to be spent next year is likely to be substantially reduced. A lot of things are going to occur in the community, so we need to really look at it as we get closer to it and evaluate the priorities and needs there. There might be hard choices to make next year in terms of just whatever. We just don't know what's going to happen if we have a second wave, businesses down, some organizations might not survive if they don't have additional help, and we may want to create those priorities and take away from others. So again, I reiterate what Drew said is it has to be case-by-case and held over to next year and no indication really that if it's not spent this year, if it hasn't been spent, there's any obligation to fund it next year.
Thank you, Roger. Jim, you're up next.
Yeah, I, I follow the, the questioning of Drew along to John and his responses. The one question I have for John is that, did we have money left over from prior? Does that affect anything of money we had left over from prior year that was put into this year's cycle? Does that, does any of that get affected by next year? Because I know we had some money that hadn't been distributed or came in or something at the beginning of this year. Is that affected at all by this?
No, there was $50,000 set aside, and that money carries forward and has not been spent and would be available for future grants.
All right, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Steven Arnold?
Yeah, I also just echo the comments made by the other committee members that it's going to be a case-by-case. Each of these applicants are going to have to adjust the way they do their business and go in case-by-case, see how they're going to bounce back and adjust is going to be an important, important step for us to take as well.
Yeah. Julie Smith?
No, no comments for me.
Richard Thomas?
Yeah, well, I, well, I support the feeling that things need to be case-by-case evaluation on the individual situations of the organization. Would we be able, and I guess, John, I'll put this question to you, would we be able to simply extend the spending horizon for 2020 grants into 2021?
I think that's a good question. I think we'll pose that to our legal counsel, but we'll, we'll follow up and share that with the committee.
Okay, thank you for the answer. My, my thinking is that if it would be possible to do that, then many of the events that might have been planned for 2020 in the second half will recur in 2021. And if they were eligible for funding under the same basis, if that horizon was extended, I think that would probably be an equitable way of handling it, if that's possible. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, I mean, it looks like we're basically all on the same page here. And, you know, obviously we're going to have to look at this from a case-by-case perspective, you know, due to, you know, some people, you know, the event was three days away and they were having to cancel event and had no funding left. And some people are having to possibly cancel event that's in November now. So it's just, there's no rhyme or reason on what's happening, there's no consistency. So case-by-case, I think, is how we're going to have to do it. From there, Drew, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just do a recap real quick with, for the committee, and if we're all in agreement, we could, at that point, then I'll put forward a motion. So our recommendation would be a case-by-case basis review for each applicant currently that has received funding. And then we would make sure that our future decision would not necessarily impact their spend or ask, depending on what their current situation is. And then we would also like to recommend and pose the question to the legal counsel about simply extending the 2020 spend into 2021. Does that accurately recap the committee's comments?
Yes, believe so.
All right, I see everyone nodding. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pose a motion for these recommendations to go with John to go back to town council.
I second.
Today, will you please do the roll call for the vote?
Brad?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, that leads us to the last thing on our agenda, which the adjournment of the meeting. So thank you, everybody, being involved today and all your hard work, and everybody have a great day. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.